I think let's get started and then Kelly will join in, you know, when she gets here.
Yeah, I'll send her a text and poker that we're waiting for.
So, um, yeah, first off, we're recording. Welcome, everybody to this town hall that the library is hosting. And I'm going to let all of you introduce yourselves in just a moment. We're going to do about two minute introductions like you did with the kids' action club. But I wanted to thank you all first so much for being here with us today, for being with the kids' action club. I know that you all get asked to do so many forums. So it's really appreciated that you took the time to be here with us today. Um, I have a little bit of housekeeping before we start. We had a couple of boxes out in the library, as you probably know, before this event, and a lot of questions were submitted in those. So we're going to stick with those at first, but audience members, you're welcome to submit questions as well. In the Q and A that should be at the bottom of your screen and we'll get to those questions as we can. And candidates, you're going to have a soft three minutes to respond to the questions that we ask. So if you're, if you've gone 30 to 60 seconds over those three minutes, I'll pop in and let you know. And, and as this is a library event, uh, everyone will need to adhere to the library's behavior policy, which you can find on our website and I can pop it in the chat if need be. And, okay, those are my housekeeping, uh, things. And then second of all, I want to make sure that everyone knows the very important dates and details for the upcoming election. So first, the last day to register to vote for the general election is Tuesday, October 12th, which is in, you know, just over a month or so. And then between October 13th and November 1st at noon, you can advance vote either by, uh, mail or probably in person, excuse me, in person. Um, and then the election itself is going to be on Tuesday, November 2nd, and it's about two months. And if you need any help getting registered or finding your polling place, you can visit the county courthouse and their new offices at, uh, 711 West 23rd Street, number one, which is at the intersection of 23rd and Louisiana, where you can give them the call. Um, yeah, and I think those are all of my details. Um, so I want to thank Brad too, the director of the library, so much for moderating this event and I'm going to turn it over to you now, Brad.
Thanks, Hazlitt, and thanks for asking me to do this. I really appreciate it. And yeah, I will, I certainly cannot, I don't know if I can make things as fun as a, as a bunch of kids, but, um, you know, I'll do my best. I have a child, um, so, and she's funny, but she's not on this call. Uh, there's Kelly. Um, so anyway, as, uh, Hazlitt had said, we are going, most of our question, well, all of the questions really that we have prepared here to start are ones that we receive from the library, um, from people submitting them at the library. And then, uh, we do have, um, some attendees on the call, so there might be some questions if we have time for them. We're, uh, a format that we'll use, again, Hazlitt alluded to a bit, or do, and she's going to be our time keeper today. Thank you, Hazlitt. And we'll have the two minute introductions and then each question, uh, each board member will, uh, board candidate, board member candidate, I should say, would have, uh, three, up to three minutes to respond. As I see now, you know, with six people, we might even just get through three questions, but we'll see. Um, and we'll try to keep a good time constraint and, and, um, honor everybody's time commitments here, both in the audience and on the panel. A really thankful, look, all six of you are here. Thank you so much for your time. And we'll just go ahead and get started. Um, I think what I'll maybe do is I'm sure that we all are seeing people somewhat differently on the screen. So I'll just call people out as I see them on the screen. Um, and, uh, we'll just go that way. So start with two minute introductions, then bring it back to me and we'll get into our questions. So, um, Andrew, you're the first one that I see over here to my right. Uh, why don't you start?
Hey, hey, thank you, thank you. Um, you might notice that I'm walking around. Um, I actually have a campaign event, um, here in a couple of minutes at South Park. I was just made aware of this, um, forum, um, recently, and I really wanted to be a part of it. So I'm doing a little bit of both and action. Um, my name's Andrew Newsbaum and my pronouns are he/him, and I just want to start by reading to all of you what I wrote to myself, um, the night of the primary election. Here's what I wrote. This campaign is just beginning. So far, I needed and wanted my campaign to be simply centered around truth telling, amplifying the voices and experiences of my friends, colleagues, coworkers, and all the young people who have so powerfully existed within and beyond our school district. Now hopefully alongside so many, I am ready to build out a campaign that centers the critical experiences of students, the wisdom worth and understanding of classified and certified staff, and envision the possibilities that so many families hope for when their children attend public schools. I was asked, why am I running? I'm running because I'm an educator, a public educator, a special education teacher, and a social justice educator. I've been a member of LEA and I've been fighting alongside Cal CWA for many, many years against great barriers and pressure and pushback and gaslighting from district leadership. I'm running because for far too long, our district leadership has cared more about PR than people, compliance than community, how they look compared to how students and staff actually feel. Equity is not happening in our district, let alone justice. I am running because I believe our classified staff not only deserves a living wage, but also more of a voice in decision-making and dignity. I'm running because as a therapeutic special education teacher, I've witnessed multiply marginalized students in my classroom be pushed out, destroyed and devastated from our community, from our school district, as our district. I'm running because I believe that Black Lives Matter and QTBIPOC students and staff must matter in our school. I'm running because I believe in relationship-based growth and deep systems work. I'm running because we need to hold our district leadership accountable and we need to speak truth to power. And I'm ready to work alongside you to do that. I'm running because we need to look at equity as an actual redistribution of resources, power and decision-making to those that most directly affected on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Elizabeth, you're up next.
Thank you. Um, so I'm Elizabeth Stevens. Um, uh, I'm really grateful to be here tonight. My, my kids are roaming around, so you may hear some, some yelling. I promise they're fine. They're just hanging out. Um, so I, so why, you know, introduction to who I am. So I, first and foremost, I'm a mom. I'm a mom of four, um, four kids who have all been in the Lawrence Public School District. Um, I am, went to, went through Lawrence Public Schools, um, as well as St. John's. Uh, I'm from North Lawrence. I grew up here. Um, this is the community that I come from. Um, this is a community that I care about and that I'm proud to raise my kids in. You know, diversity, equity and inclusion are, you know, hot button words right now, right? So what does that mean? How do we put it into action? Um, you know, diversity and equity, these are all, these are things that is, is the work of everyone. It's on all of us to ensure that we are looking through that lens at every opportunity. My goal and why I decided to run is because I feel like in order to have an accurate, in order to have equitable policies and procedures implemented, we need to have diversity within our structure, uh, diversity across all sectors, race, educational background, economic background. All of these things need to be diverse in order to have an adequate depiction of who our community is. I hope to bring that to the board and I'm excited to continue working.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Kay, you're up.
All right. Hello, everyone. So my name is Kate Emerson. Uh, my pronouns are she/her. Uh, so I have been, uh, someone who says, you know, there are people who were born and raised and then are transplants. So I'm a transplant here in Lawrence. I came here about 20 years ago, uh, to go to the University of Kansas. And I have been a long-term, uh, community volunteer and education advocate, um, in our school district. And I decided to run for, well, I'm also a mom. I have two, two wonderful boys, so hashtag boy moms. Um, girl moms and mixed moms are also cool with parents. But, um, I decided to run for school board because I believe that all students have the opportunity to learn and achieve success, you know? I think that knowing what success is for them and the path to get there is super important. Um, I also believe that knowledge is power and Lawrence, I mean, we are a community that is filled, filled with educated individuals that, you know, in our silos, we're really doing great work. And so as a community, we have to get more used to being able to share information and share resources freely and readily and be proactive in being able to really unite under knowing that our education in Lawrence needs our help right now. We, we need your help. And so for me, it's really about being able to make those bridges and being able to bring people together. So we are able to address this issue not as a them versus us, or it's just, we're all in this together. And how do we get in front of it as one body of individuals? So, you know, I really believe that, you know, there is no choice without voice. Um, and so I think amplifying that and bringing that, um, and so everyone who has something to say feels like they could share is really important. Um, so our students can be successful and have the autonomy to make the choices that they want in their lives. Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. GR, you're up.
All right. Thanks, Fred. Um, my name is Joe Gordon Ross, a current board member serving alongside Kelly Jones, uh, for the last almost four years. A little bit of background about me, like, uh, Kay moved to Lawrence, uh, just over 20 years ago. Uh, we won't say how much over, but over 20 years ago to attend University of Kansas and have been here ever since. Um, you have five children, three of which have, um, graduated from Lawrence Public School System, two are still in it. Um, I'm a product of public education and when I was in middle school, my mom decided to run, uh, for the school board in the town that we grew up in and, and really started as an inspiration for me on not only the, the value of public education, but also on giving back to that system that, that gave me a lot and really set me on a, on a path and it really set my children on a, on a path. And so that's really what, what, what got me to run for the first time. And then these last four years has, has really been, um, it's been, it's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of learning, a lot of growing and a lot of seeing, um, where the district is and where the district needs to go. Um, spent a lot of time on the facilities committee and understanding our facilities and how best we can utilize them to empower our, our students and our staff. Um, being able to, to finalize the, the, um, the latest bond project, specifically the work at Lawrence High School as that's, as that's come, come to, um, uh, close here and, and the changes that have been made there, but also the changes that were made across the middle schools and free state. Um, it's the, the, the work, being able to support the work that our policy committee has done and the various policies of our equity policy and our dress code, the policy and the positive impact that's had on students being able to, to, um, individually express themselves and be able to find their true voice. Um, had, have had conversations with my own children and had children participate in some of the protests that have, that, that took place in Lawrence High over, over the last several years and have been able to, to, to learn from them and learn from their experience and bring that to the board table and, and also learn that, uh, the work isn't done. The, the work still needs, there's still work, work to do. There's work to do with our staff. There's, there's, there's work to do, um, from a, from a compensation wage standpoint. And there's work to do from a fiscal management and stability standpoint. And that's why I'm running again, because I think we've started the work, but I'd like to continue the work so that we can see it through. Thank you.
Thank you, GR. Nate, you are up next.
Hi there. My name is Nate Morsius. I have four children in the school district, uh, two of whom are adopted through foster care and one of whom has special needs. And I got to see, uh, just how incredible the special needs program was for my daughter. And, uh, it, it, it led me to, uh, just get more involved in the school district and, um, I was encouraged to run and, uh, here I am. The, the primary reason that I want to run is because we are seeing all over the United States that communities are being torn apart by decisions that, uh, the school boards are making. And I want to, as much as I can, um, bring unity to this community, uh, for the sake of our children, our future leaders, and anything I can do to, uh, bring everybody together to that one purpose. Um, that's, that's why I'm running and it has to do with, uh, uh, three different platform points. My first being, uh, preparing students for post-secondary education. And what I mean by that is, uh, traditional college is, uh, an incredible option for many students. Uh, but it is not the best option for a lot of other students. We need to communicate that things like trade school, apprenticeships, entrepreneurship, all these things, they're not, they're not lesser options. In, in many cases, based on the student's goals and skills, they are, they are better options. Um, the second point being, uh, the mental wellbeing of teachers and students, having gone through COVID, uh, the past year and a half. Uh, it's, it's, it's been very difficult. It's been incredibly difficult. And we need to be able to provide for the mental wellbeing, uh, as we recover together as a community. Uh, the final point is financial sustainability. Uh, as a business owner, I own RPG on Mass Street. Uh, I hope to be able to bring not just good, uh, business management skills, but also entrepreneurial skills with the creativity and, uh, new ways of thinking, um, about, uh, uh, about, um, building, building, uh, financial sustainability. That, those three points are going to be my, uh, top priorities and, um, I just look forward to, uh, being able to do that if you'll have me. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Kelly, you get to close this out.
Never know whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but, um, thank you for having us to the Lawrence Public Library. I appreciate it. Um, I am running for reelection. I come to the school board as a licensed master level social worker. Uh, I have about 20, 25 years experience in that field. My current position is at the, um, KU School of Social Welfare, where I'm a, an associate professor of practice and the director of field education. I've been in thousands of homes, which is kind of crazy, but over my career, I've been in, um, many, many homes doing, uh, what Nate had mentioned in terms of mental health work, but also other care coordination work. And what I saw over and over and over again was that in cases where individuals had higher educational attainment, um, they had better and higher qualities of life. And that's true in my own house as well. Um, my husband and I are both first generation college graduates and where we're at compared to where our parents were at, when they were our age is quite different. Um, and so I want to make sure that after having been part of like helping people in crisis work, that I have this opportunity to be part of solutions-based work. And that's what I see public education as. Um, after four years of serving on the board and a year as president during the pandemic, um, I learned quite a bit about how our district runs and how the policies and procedures work and where there are gaps and, and where we need to improve and where we have great strengths. Um, and I want to take that investment that the district has put into me, um, in terms of my training and education and as a school board member to apply that again, moving forward as we continue to navigate the pandemic. But as, uh, every candidate here, I think, has mentioned, or nearly every candidate here, really looking at how does Lawrence become a leader in the equity work that we've been doing to make sure that we are the kind of community, um, that we want to be. So we talk about being a very progressive community. So how does our district reflect that? And that's my hope is to contribute to that and to the good work that our teachers and, um, and, uh, classified staff are doing in our district and our students, the work our students are doing. Ultimately, I know we're all here because we care about kids.
Thanks, Kelly. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your introductions and, um, I've been trying to figure out, we've got, you know, four different kind of main questions that I hope we will get to all four, but, uh, I was trying to figure out what the best one to start with was. There are no softballs here, I would say. Um, so to me, I thought the one that seems to be the most timely, uh, is COVID. So let's go ahead and go there. Why not? So what, and, and, and I would say too, what I think I'm going to try to do to just create equity the best I can and how we're, um, just kind of going, running through all of this is, I'm, um, I don't know, I'll figure it out. But I, I'm just going to kind of call on people as we go. Is, are you okay with the surprise method here? Um, we'll figure out how this goes. I'll try to mix it up the best I can to keep everything going. Okay. So our question is, what is your plan to keep our kids safe from COVID-19? And let's start with, you know, well, actually you'll get a little bit of a test here. You can look at the panel saying, let's go in reverse order by alphabetically by last name, or first name, which would be Nate. Why don't you go first, Nate?
Well, um, I am a registered nurse, so I participate in, uh, the actual care of COVID patients on a day-to-day basis in the emergency department and ICU. And, um, you know, the mask mandate that we currently have is, uh, one of the, uh, best steps that we can take forward, um, getting through the year. And, you know, as we're seeing the, the, the different, um, the different spikes, uh, this particular spike with the Delta variant, uh, from my experience has been the worst one so far. Um, the number of patients, um, coming in who are, who are getting, uh, terribly ill. Um, it's, it's unsettling. And, uh, so, you know, I'm certainly in support of our mask mandate. And seeing, seeing how this, uh, spike goes and adapting all the time is, is really, it's kind of been the name of the game, uh, since the beginning of the pandemic. And as a business owner, I've had to pivot, um, to make sure our employees were taken care of. Um, it's, it's, it's difficult to say, uh, exactly what we're going to do for the future other than adapt well, look at the data, make decisions that are in the best interests of all the students, teachers, families, everyone involved in the district. Um, uh, but, I mean, as a starting point, the mask mandate, uh, we've, we've got to keep that in place. I'll, I'll, I'll leave that there for now just because it's so, it's so flexible. It's so, we just have to be, uh, adaptive.
Thank you. Kelly, you're up next.
I was trying to fill all this pressure from a librarian to be able to say like, what's the next alphabetical order? So, um, I thought it was me. So I'm, I'm glad to be going second. Uh, so I'll, in terms of COVID-19, I think there's a couple of things that we have to consider. One, um, as I have through, you know, most, most of the, of the time that I've been on the board is really to look at, um, what are health officials saying we need to do to be safe? Um, and for our students to be safe and our staff to be safe. So I definitely agree that we need to be in good partnership with our health authorities at the state and the, um, local levels and also paying attention to what's happening at the federal level. And being able to, in a state where we have a, a law that doesn't allow for remote learning, um, with all of its good intentions, we know the consequences of that as well. So looking at an estate that hasn't been as supportive of, um, a mask mandate as it could be, is that a simple step that Lauren can lead in? And certainly we have done that. Um, additionally, I would say that there are other opportunities within the COVID-19 ESRS funds that we're getting from the federal government. So how do we apply those funds in a way that creates opportunities for our students? It's really one of those, these are one-time funds, but it's a, it's an opportunity to look at where, where can we provide services that we've wanted to provide before, things like summer programming, where we can lift students up and see, um, does that influx of, of funds and support create better outcomes for our students? And can we demonstrate that that really isn't something that should be, should be limited to the pandemic, but really be sustained funding that would allow for us to, um, utilize those dollars in other spaces as well? So I, that I think has been, um, a hard one. Um, silver lining to the pandemic is what do we do with those federal dollars that have come in? And then additionally, I think our staff who've been, I mean, extraordinary, what educators have been through over the last years. Um, unprecedented. They have learned, um, skills that I have seen, I'm seeing them applied this year in a in-person setting that has been really inspiring to watch in our students. When we were just in a, um, forum, uh, our, our last forum with our students, to see them enthusiastically with all explanation marks, say that they want masks because they want to be in person. Um, but that's the kind of school board members that they need is people that understand where we came from, where we're at now and how we can, um, benefit and grow, uh, rather than thinking just about it in, in terms of deficit.
Thanks, Kelly. Uh, Kate, you're up next.
Um, I, uh, I always like to listen to, uh, what everyone else, uh, has to say on, on this issue because I think that one of the things, um, with, uh, how do we address COVID-19, which is going to be key is communication. And that will require us to not only talk, um, but to really listen to what each and, uh, each of us have to say about it. So, um, so for me, um, I think this kind of gets to, you know, staying, um, as Dr. Farsi says, like with COVID-19, i- is one of these things and where, you know, if, if it's catching up to you, you're already late. So you need to be two or three steps ahead of us. Um, and so I think about, you know, how we can, how we can really help out with, um, and support, um, our mitigation, um, our mitigation, um, things that we are putting in place, um, at the school level. I also think about how COVID-19, um, it's, it's affecting not only just our health, uh, but also our minds. So the mental health aspect of things and on the education side of it, you know, as Kelly was selling, saying this remote learning, um, uh, i- is a big thing, you know, we have, uh, students and classes that are, um, are going into quarantine and with, with, you know, sometimes not knowing what, what, what that next step is going to be. And so how are we as community, um, not just the school board members, um, but as a community, how are we going to be addressing that relational and social loss? And so for me, it's about being able to look into not the different data points, um, being able to look into, you know, the different laws that are talking about, you know, what is really our jurisdictions and our parameters on, on remote learning? What can we actually do and provide to our families during quarantine? Um, I even think about how can we, as Kelly was saying, be creative, uh, with these ESRS funds? Because yes, why it's a one-time, you know, we have essentially three years to utilize it, if I have it correct, three years to utilize that. So how are we planning for not just now, but in the future? And so for me, it's not, it's not about just addressing the now, it's about looking forward, um, in, staying ahead of COVID-19. So that's what I will say. Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. Uh, GR, you're up.
So Brad, I have two requests before I start. One, would you mind repeating the question just so I can have it? And then they, in the, in the kids forum, they, they, what they did that was really helpful is when they would ask the question, they'd actually type it in the chat. Just, just so that we, we had it. And that was really helpful for those of us that are like fourth, fifth and sixth. Cause by the time you hear three answers, sometimes you, you lose the, lose the question. So I just want to make sure I actually answer the question.
Kids, I swear.
Well, I mean,
good education or something.
I mean, by the time I've heard Nate, Kelly and Kay, I now I'm thinking I'm going to answer the question that I think it is, but.
GR, I really appreciate that. That's, that's, we will definitely do that. So, and I'll, and I'll repeat it just right now to kick us off. And, um, yeah, what is your plan to keep our kids safe from COVID-19? And, uh, and thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No, um, you know, I, so Kelly, Kelly addressed a lot of it. I think, I think the biggest thing is, one is, is admitting as a school district that we're not, we're not healthcare professionals. And, and, and so the relationship that we have with, with local healthcare professionals and, and so the relationship that we have with Lawrence, Lawrence Douglas County Health and the relationship that we form with Unified Command and making sure that, that the decisions that we make, the mitigation strategies that we put in place, that, that we're working with them and under their guidance as they are paying attention to, um, state and federal, um, information that's constantly changing. And, and so as it changes, they inform us or we inform them of in, information that we have. So any changes that we make, we, we always do it under the, the, the guidance and, and, and the, and the, the leadership of Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, because they're our local health authority, acknowledging that, that we aren't healthcare professionals as, as, as an entity. I think that's, that's, that's the single biggest thing that we can do. I think the second thing that we can do is to recognize and understand that by and large, most every COVID case that we have in our district is from exposure outside of our school system. And so to recognize that the community plays an incredibly massive role in protecting our students and our staff from COVID by doing what they can outside of our school system by. outside of our school system by masking when they, when, when they go out in public and following the same mitigation strategies wherever possible, wherever they can, wherever they feel it is appropriate, but understanding that the, the, the student-to-student spread, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, because it does, but by and large, those cases are happening outside, and then we're finding out about it when they're inside. So it's, it's the community doing the same work that we're asking our students and staff to do. Those are the two biggest things that we can do. I think utilizing the, those ESRS funds that we've gotten as part of the pandemic, as we look at things that we can apply to the facilities. We, we did the air purifiers, we can do some, some other things I think are all wonderful way, great ways that we can do to keep kids safe during this year. And if it has to go, go, go beyond.
Thanks, thanks, GR. Questions in the chat, but I, I feel now like I should ask again. I apologize to candidates that didn't get the question hand-delivered to them and that, that does not put you in as a deficit here. Elizabeth, what is your plan to keep our kids safe from COVID-19?
Thank you. So I think that we have to, so first, I think that we have to look at this as a holistic, take a holistic view at what this means, right? So we have to identify safety. So safety from COVID, right? So we're talking about masks, hand washing, air purifiers, all of those kinds of things. Those are great. We also need to take a look, a really good, hard look at social emotional health. And, you know, looking and see our, our kids, you know, basic needs being met. Do they have shelter? Do they have clothing? Do they have food? What are their, you know, if they're going home to quarantine, do they have the resources? Do mom and dad have the resources that they need to ensure that they're able to keep employment? So looking at those kinds of things and taking a much more holistic view and how can we connect families with resources in the community? The other piece of that is testing. We have the ability to, to do, to do testing all throughout the community. And you have saliva tests that we can make available, as well as a couple of other testing methods that are in the works, making those available every time a kid, if a class goes into quarantine, making test kits available. If we're able to track where, how frequently people are getting positive test results, I think that gives us a better window into what we're dealing with and can help us keep kids safe.
Thanks. All right, Andrew, your, your last one here, and I'll go ahead and ask a question again. What is your plan to keep our kids safe from COVID-19?
Thank you, Brad, for asking that. And I guess that my name starts with an A in the alphabet, so thank you, thank you, thank you. So much of what so many people have said, I agree with. And it's taken so long for a lot of us to get to those statements of masks mitigation and like meaningful and structural like care and change. One thing I would want to add at least first, and then go from there, is we're talking about experts. Yes, health professional experts, yes, public policy experts, yes, community leadership. And we, I, as a teacher of over a decade, working in these buildings last year, both remote, hybrid, and then in-person, believe that we must continue and actually, actualize even more, listening to those, the most directly affected, meaning students, classified staff especially, and certified staff. It was agonizing over the last year and a half, as somebody fighting with Pal CWA, as an LEA member, as a teacher, us in conversation, in collaboration with our unions, figuring out how can we stay safe in our spaces so that we can amplify, educate, and be alongside students, so that students, kids, right, young adults, can experience the fullest version of education possible here in Lawrence Public Schools? And some of our perspectives, some of our voices, some of our recommendations, we're not listened to. We're not valued as much as some other peoples and other stakeholders in the community based on some sort of the organizational charter hierarchy. So what I would add is continue to listen to health professionals deeply, public policy peoples deeply. And just as important is the students themselves, families themselves, and then especially, especially, especially those working alongside every day in the buildings, certified staff, classified staff, and bus drivers. So that's the key point that I would add, that I don't think has occurred in this district over the last year and a half. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. We're at 6:07, and so that means we've got about, well, we've got about 23 minutes. And so what I'm wondering is, if we're going to keep this at three minutes a person, that really means we just have time for one question left, unless you want to lighten it around this. And I, I feel like it might be better to just stick with our format and have one, one more question. Does that sound, I see some head nodding there. Okay, I just, as a novice moderator, I am hesitant to stray from our methodology. As you've seen and, and, and needed to critique at this point, we need to stick to script. So, so I was give you a hard time. I really do appreciate it. I love it when people just be frank, so thank you. So, and I'm going to type this in here. And then I'll read it. So our next question they've got here is, what is your, what is your plan to address critical special education staff shortages, including paraprofessionals, teachers, and service providers? And let's see, I'm just going to do this somewhat randomly this time, I think, just for fun. So GR, where do you start off?
You know, that's a great, that's a great question, and I appreciate the, the question. There's a lot of different things that, that we've tried in the past that, that haven't worked. I think the biggest thing that, that we need to do is we need to address our salary scale, both for our certified staff and our classified staff, which is something that we have committed to do. The, what we've, what we've attempted to do in, in the short term is Dr. Lewis, just this week, announced some use of ESRS funds for a recruitment and retention bonus for staff over the next two years, for, for people that are hired. And then the district budget and evaluation and program committee are going to take as their top two priorities over the next two years to look through the budget and to address their top two priorities or to, to address money for salaries and money to build up our contingency reserve. And so the most important thing is to, is to, is to rebuild and to find money for wages so that we can increase the, the wage scale, so that we can attract the, the talent and the, and the people that we need to fill those positions. That's, that's, that's probably the, the best and, and easiest way. Easy is probably not, not, not the best answer, but that's probably the best way that we can do that.
Thanks. Andrew, what is your plan to address the critical special education staff shortage, including paraprofessionals, teachers, and service providers? Let me check. I was wondering, he is walking around a lot. I know he's getting ready to, did, Andrew, do you want me to, did, did you want to?
I'm so sorry. Oh, I was getting all excited too.
Go ahead, go ahead. No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure you're, you're the most ambulatory of all of us here. So I just wanted to, that, yeah, you're, you want to take it? Do you need me to repeat it?
Please repeat it, and then I'll go from there.
You got it. What is your plan to address the critical special education staff shortage, including paraprofessionals, teachers, and service providers?
I was getting all excited in my answer, and then I forgot in this facilitated way that I was on mute. But I'm gonna go back again and say it again. And I think my answer has been in all of my answers. If we're talking about equity, if we're talking about Lawrence Public Schools as a progressive space, if we're talking about equality education and what can we do best for our kids, then we have to ask this question every single time and all the time. Here's a message, a text message I got from a former colleague today. I know you know this because you're a teacher, but we are so short-staffed every day. And today, we are making safety decisions and unable to consistently support our students to the quality of education they deserve. Very frustrating exclamation point. I know you left to run for school board. I know I am leaving. This structure does not value students or the essential staff needed to provide quality support for them. Any conversation we're having, if we're not having a conversation about living wages, if we're not having a conversation about redistribution, redistributing resources, redistributing power, redistributing decision-making, then we're not having a conversation about equity. We're not having a conversation about centering students. We're not having a conversation about centering social emotional needs. I've been a therapeutic special education teacher. I've been a history teacher. I created the social awareness program and IPS in the community. We have to be alongside our young peoples. And the only way we can be alongside our young peoples is acknowledge that we have a job shortage, not because people don't want to work, but because they can't work, let alone aren't going to be able to take jobs that don't pay their bills, let alone support their families. Kelly talked about the quality of life is directly correlated and relevant to our opportunities in life. We have families, we have parents, we have graduates in our district that are now paras, that now drive the buses, that now work in our lunchrooms, and yet they're having to quit or having to make awful decisions about COVID, or about their second job or third job or, or care for their children. When we talk about one issue, we're actually talking about all the other issues. So my answer again is, one, to acknowledge this and address it immediately and fervently and powerfully from those most directly affected, our young people, paraprofessionals, classified staff, and certified staff. This has to be the conversation. And day one, when I'm in office, if I am able to be in office, I will demand, let's say it, right, that we focus on this conversation anytime we bring up any other conversation at all times. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Who is next? Who is next? Who is next? Kelly, what's your plan to address critical special education staff shortages, including paraprofessionals, teachers, service providers?
So this is an issue that, that matters to me a great deal. At the last board meeting, I asked for an analysis of where we are at in our staffing, so we can understand in real terms what, where, where is the, how, how significant is the issue? We know that there are teacher shortages across the state, particularly in special education. We're having, there are communities in Kansas that do not have qualified special education teachers serving in those positions. And we're lucky in Lawrence to have the type of staff that we do. So when, when special education teachers like Andrew and others leave, or when paraeducators tell us that they can't stay, we know that we have, we have a crisis. And that is beginning to show at the seams. I do think we have an HR staff that is working really hard to address that shortage and utilizing their skill set to bring in and retain the folks that we can. We definitely have to address the wage issue. I agree that that's an entirely imperative component of the work that we're doing now. I serve on the negotiations committee and on the budget committee, and it's been a priority for me in both of those spaces. I think there's more work that we can do, and there's more work that folks like GR and I have to do to get other colleagues to come along with us in terms of prioritizing our, our paraeducators. We, I did have an interaction with a parent that also recommended that we have, we have a special education parent group that's led by Kevin Harrell, who's our, our director of special education, and the request being that that committee become a board committee. So that's just, that's quite solution focused, but in, in terms of like, looking at like, where are the layers? So who is at the table providing us the information? Are the teachers and the students and the families there to let us know what their real lived experiences are in our district? So when Nate talks about his family having a positive experience, you know, where are the places where we could grow? And certainly, I think when we move into the next year in the budget committee, we do have to do exactly what GR was, was talking about, which is focus on where, where are those funds we can, can find through restructuring of certain programming, or particularly around how, how we are distributing class sizes as well, to see, is there a space where we can optimize some usage of our resources so that we can, we can see that savings go to our, our staff? It is challenging in the current budgetary reality that we're in to find those dollars. And we really have to put all of our heads together to look at, how are we going to make this, get this done? But I, if, as board members, so any of you that get elected as board members, when you give that directive to the district over the next two years to create a, a plan to get us to a living wage, you are doing the work of protecting our students. In particular, you're doing the work of ensuring that our students that have special, that need, that have functional needs are getting the quality care that they need, because we're retaining the staff instead of having to constantly have them turn over. So I do think this is one of those moral imperatives of board members to look at, how do we address this? And we have to come through it multiple, through multiple means and, and measures. The, the final thing I would say about this is that I, I think our relationship with our unions are really important. So are we as board members accessible to our unions? But you know, additionally, are we making sure that our, our administration and our unions are, are in a good collaborative relationship? And I do think that the, the type of negotiation that we do in the district right now in terms of that interest-based bargaining sets us up to be in a better direction for that.
Thanks, Kelly. Elizabeth, I'll ask you next. What is your plan to address the critical special education staff shortages, including paraprofessionals, teachers, and service providers?
Thank you, Brad. You know, I think that this is a, this is an issue that we, that we see in social service fields all over the place, in addition to within, within our school district, right? So we see really frequently those who are providing the direct service or on the front lines are the ones who are most frequently getting paid the less, or the, the least amount. So I think that the easiest, you know, for really, as second to pay, right? So if you have someone who is making $11 an hour, that kid is, that staff person is maybe educating a student about how to access community resources that they themselves also have to access. So you're essentially standing in line to access resources together. Obviously, that's problematic. So how do you change that, right? So pay can feel like validation, right? So if you're paid in a way that you can provide for your family, that feels like some validation. But maybe taking that a step further and looking at how do we invest in our, in our staff? Are there training opportunities? Are there growth opportunities that we can provide? You know, our paras, any of our supportive staff, what kind of training can we, how can we invest as a district? How can we say, we see you, we see the importance of your work, we know that it's hard, we want to help you continue to grow and stay with us? Speaking to that retention piece again. So what are those opportunities? What does that look like? How do we invest? Because, and what, kind of going back to something that Andrew said was acknowledgement, right? We, I think we have to acknowledge the importance of the work that these folks are doing, right? We have kids who really need one-on-one attention. We have kids who are vulnerable. And a lot of times, more often than not, those paras and support staff are the people who are there making a difference in those kids' lives i- in an immeasurable way. And the thought that they're getting paid $11 an hour is beyond insulting. So I think that we can do better. And I think that we need to take a really good hard look. If that means that we have to like skim from the top and lift those who are those frontline workers, maybe that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Kay, what is your plan to address critical special education staff shortages, including paras, teachers, and service providers?
Okay, so I want to acknowledge just all the great ideals that, and suggestions that have came out of this forum today. So the one, the first thing that I'll say is that this problem is a community problem. I'll say that again. This problem is a community problem, and we all play a part in it. Because we don't have to solve this alone. Lawrence is an amazing city with a lot of great resources, intelligent individuals who can help us solve this together, right? And so I go to my walk. And so I go to my why. My why is to help every student be successful, regardless of what successful is, as they choose it to be, right? And we have heard time and time again that our district is telling us we need more time, we need, we need more resources, we are at our end. We are at our end. We're leaving. So what do we do? I think it, there, there is a kind of a three-level way that we can go about this. One, one of the very core duties of a school board member is advocacy. And so that's being able to advocate at our state level for being able to, to have more flexibility in our budgetary parameters. I also think about, you know, how, how can we utilize, you know, the, how can we utilize our expertise in, in specifically minds and, and great management and, and fiscal, uh, and fiscal management to be able to look at these federal laws, uh, these um, standards that come down from our, our state department that tells us, hey, you know, this is how you can spend those ESSR funds. How do we get creative like that? How, who can we talk to to help give us insight on that? Because again, we don't have to do this alone. And then I think about how do we continue to leverage our resources? We have businesses. We have two colleges in our community, right? With students that are trying to create their own pathways, a lot of them in, in education. So how do we partner with that? So at the end of this, it, it really, for me, it gets down to this is a community issue. We all play a part. So that's how we address the critical special needs. We get away from all the talking, and we start figuring out the action to it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kay. Nate, like Kelly said, whether to go last is, is a cursor. You get the last shot here. So um, what is your plan to address critical special education staff shortage, including paras, teachers, and service providers?
Well, um, everybody has said so far, uh, increase, increase wages, and I completely agree. Uh, and I'd like to tell you why I'm so passionate about it. First of all, if we're talking about special education, we are talking about something that directly uh, uh, impacts my particular family because I have a daughter in special education and um, we've had such a great experience so far, and I've seen growth in her that I would not have expected, to be honest. And that needs to continue. That needs to be available. Uh, we can't, we can't shortchange this. But I also want to talk about uh, when we, when we're, when we're thinking about staff shortages, I've seen two examples that I'd like to, I'd like to discuss. Um, the first is a bad example, and the second is uh, what I consider a good example. The bad example would be uh, what I've seen in healthcare. Um, while things are going crazy with COVID, uh, we are not seeing uh, changes in wages. Uh, so as a laborer uh, in, in the hospitals, nurses are leaving in droves. So not only are there more patients, but there are less nurses, and everybody's attitude is poor. Everybody's on the verge of quitting all the time. And this isn't just my hospital, this is, this is nationwide. Um, but what I've seen personally is that uh, uh, things get really bad when the pay is not there. Um, the good example uh, I'd like to talk about actually is my business, uh, because at RPG, we made the decision early on in COVID when I heard one of my employees, um, I saw a post online which said I just made a yogurt last two meals. Uh, that, that could not continue. So we, we decided to pay our employees $15 an hour at a minimum, our restaurant employees. And uh, what we did to make it happen was we restructured the way that we charge our customers, and we restructured the budget in, in, in uh, creative ways, and we made it possible. And we're still here despite having to pay uh, our employees not having to, despite choosing to pay our employees a higher wage that is, is not seen uh, very often in, in Lawrence. And um, we're still here. We've made it because we've made creative financial decisions to make it possible. And so Kelly, I really appreciate what you've said about putting heads together because I think that I can be a resource in, in this regard because I've done it. And uh, I know things are very different in the uh, the, the school district budget, but the principles um, I've enacted, I've done this, and I, I, I hope to be a resource for the school board in this regard. But we have to pay our employees more. We have to.
Thanks, Nate. Uh, we got into some pretty deep dives here about some pretty serious stuff, and we've got about three minutes here. And we were trying to figure out there was some kind of light, lighter lightning round that we could go through. And the first thing I could think of is what's your favorite color? And that's probably not too interesting. Um, but I was trying to think something you could do in 30 seconds or less. Um, um, oh, God, I'm making this up on the spot here for you. Um, how about, um, oh, God, that would take too long to answer. You know what? What's your favorite color? Um, Andrew, what's your favorite color?
I just like deep, I just like deep earth tones, deep earth tones. I can't say one favorite color, but some deep earth tones is where I'd go.
I color spectrum is acceptable, Andrew. Um, Elizabeth?
And I, I don't know why I freeze at this question, right? Like, that should be the most simple question ever, but I'm like, there's so many colors. They're all so great. I, I mean, and I look at my closet and it's all black. So I feel like either that or I'm just a product of my generation. So I'm gonna go with black.
Black. Hey, it's all colors together, isn't it? That's a wonderfully political answer there. Yes. Um, G R?
As painful as it is for me to admit in this town, purple.
A lovely shade. Uh, Kay?
So I am a Jayhawk'er through and through. Uh, but on the campaign trail, we say, go purple for Kay, so.
What about you, Kelly?
I also find this question entirely frozen. The hardest survey questions we had were the ones from the um, Lawrence Times that were like, what's your favorite book? What's your favorite animal? I thought I was gonna lose my mind over those. Like, what will people read into whatever color I say? But I'm gonna go with blue because of the sky. I like it at the wetlands, so I'm going with that.
Sky blue, it's beautiful. And I think, did McKinsey ask this question? She did ask great questions. She might have asked us. We'll have to check your guys' answers on the recording.
I don't think I, that's what I was also trying to think, like, did I say blue? I don't know. Yeah.
Nate, what about you?
Red's my favorite color for passion in life and uh, an exciting fire.
Thank you. Thank you for humoring me. Um, and yeah, as Haslett did say, yes, you all did answer this question. So we're gonna fact-check you and see whether you stick to your stories or not. I'm joking. Anyway, hey, um, thank you for putting us on your tour. I know you've got a heavy tour schedule. Um, I just want to thank you all, like, I, we have a board at our library. This is a volunteer job. You, this is a, that you're doing. I've so many volunteers play so many vital roles. It's a heavy lift. A lot of times, it can feel really thankless. And so keeping that faith and knowing what is so important in this work, I just want to thank you all so much for your courage and your passion to do this. It's such a vital part of our community and um, uh, I'm just really thankful for all of you putting your hats in, and, and I wish you all the best of luck. And um, I say we've recorded this, so folks can see it on YouTube, I imagine, later on the library's channel. And again, sincerely, our, our deepest thanks for taking this time. And with the kiddos today, you put, LPL put you through a long afternoon today, so we're, we're um, super thankful. So thank you so much. I'll turn it back over to Haslett.